County Board of Commissioners regular session for Monday, July 19th to order. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the robe.
Commissioner Lainer?
Here.
Commissioner Mark?
Here.
Commissioner McCabe?
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Here.
And I'm noting she's remote for the record. Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Here.
Chairman Jones?
Here. Ladies and gentlemen, if you will, please let us stand as we salute and pledge to the American flag, which will be followed by a prayer with our county attorney.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good and gracious Father, you are the source of every good thing and the fount of every blessing. We praise you for your great care that you have for us, your children. As a source of all that is good and true, we ask you to inspire within our hearts a greater longing to pursue these ends and draw us ever closer to yourself. We ask you to send forth your blessing upon all those gathered here before you. May we receive your guidance and wisdom in accomplishing the tasks set before us. Protect us, keep our country and county safe from all harm, and may we pursue in freedom of heart the things that are yours now and forever. Amen.
Commissioners, each of you should have received your agenda in the proper time. It was published on our county website for each and every one to see. Are there any items that the commissioners desire to add or to pull from today's agenda? Here none, do I have a motion to approve the agenda? We have a motion to have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on the motion? Here none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. The first item of business before the Board of Commissioners today is a presentation from Religious Community Services. We have with us Mrs. Ebb. Good morning, sir. If you will come and present to us.
Sure thing. Thank you so much. Commissioners, everybody from the community, thank you for having me this morning. I can't tell you how much your support has meant to our organization. And this morning, I just want to take a quick opportunity to talk about what we do, who we are, where we're coming from, and where we're going. I asked the county manager how long I had. He said, "As long as I need." And vice chair seconded that, so he said I had an hour and a half. So I'll try to take all of my time this morning. My kid. But founded in 1982, RCS was founded with one solitude singular mission, and that was to meet the needs of the most disenfranchised in our community. I would say that that is a lofty mission. And it was a lofty mission thought up by women who were tenacious and highly motivated. They sought to do something that we still are trying to do today, and that is to bring unity in mission to the community. So they started with the churches, and 11 churches in all held hands and founded what we now call Religious Community Services. In the 39 years that have followed, we have lived out that mission as firmly and as strategically as we possibly can. And I'm happy to say that in my one-year tenure as executive director, I am proud of the job that we are doing in this community. As I celebrate that one year of work and discovery and learning in this community, I can say that I've learned some things about the security net that we call RCS. I've learned that our strategic is not, our strategy is not static. Our strategy to meet need changes with the needs. That makes sense, right? If the need changes, how we meet that need has to change. And so, we're in the midst of a strategic change. Rather than being a services-forward organization where we put services first, we are now a case management-forward organization where we put the clients first. We hear from our guests, our clients, our residents. I was happy in October of last year to open our women, our family, residence, and our vet residence. Commissioner Booker, thank you for your presentation and your attendance at the ribbon cutting. What we found is since that ribbon cutting and the opening of that residence, we have not gone below capacity one day. Every day, we have been full. In fact, today, as I stand before you, we have four family residents and we have six families that we're serving. The demand for our services is high, and we're convinced that we won't change that unless we look at the actual underlying needs that keep people in the loop of needing services. What we've learned is no one needs a handout. And so, we're looking for innovative ways to hand people up, to give them a hand up, to help them and empower them, to engage them holistically, and to create around them supportive social structures that will allow them to live the life that they were, they were created to live, and that is self-sufficiency. You'll find about me, I'm not much of a speech maker, but I am a storyteller. So let me tell you a story of how we're doing this. We received a call at RCS about seven o'clock on a Saturday night. It was about three months ago. And that call was from one of the local judges. At seven o'clock on a Saturday night, we were not in the office, but we received the call. And it was about a young lady, 20 years old, in this community, and she had received charges for solicitation, and she had received charges for a number of other things. She was facing jail time. The judge on, the judge on the call said, "There has to be a different solution." And so, he thought of RCS. So he called us, seven o'clock on a Saturday night. He said, "If we can get this young lady in a shelter and we can get her to services that would improve her circumstances, then we could suspend, he could suspend her, her judgment." I'm happy to report today that we just received a letter, three months later. We just received a letter that she's in Charlotte, still in treatment, and has just joined her first church in Charlotte and celebrated her baptism this past Sunday. This is the kind of positive, permanent life transformation that RCS is about. And how did that happen? It happened through partnership, collaboration, patience, and conversation. We didn't throw services on, on the client. We didn't throw programming on the client. We had case managers work with her, one-on-one, to see where the needs were, to see where the problem areas were, and to find solutions that actually worked for her. That's the work that RCS is doing. We want to work person to person, client to client, resident to resident, shelter guest to shelter guest, so that we're finding permanent solutions for people to support the life of self-sufficiency that they were created for. Now, of course, I'm a businessman like you guys. I'm not a businesswoman like you, though, so. But the question has to be raised, how are we paying for it? And the truth is, that, that has not gone unanswered. We're not relying on a year-over-year budget as we have done for the last 38 years. Our new strategy requires that we think long-term. The seeds that we sow for financial sustainability are not for us and us alone. They are for our grandchildren and our grandchildren's children, and we believe that at RCS full-heartedly. So, we've thrown ourselves into the long and hard process of figuring out sustainable funding. We've, we've thrown ourselves into the process of creating legacy-giving partnerships and endowments that will preserve the, preserve the work that we do for generations to come. The truth is, this is a long process, and it's a costly one. And so, I do want to just, before I go to questions that you all have, I do want to just say, thank you for bearing with us as we're in this process. It is a time of transition for the organization, and we are working for sustainable funding because we believe in the work that we do is making a difference in our community. Thank you, guys, for the opportunity to speak to you today. And with that, shoot, fire, fire away. I'm ready for your questions.
All right, Commissioners, you have questions?
Yes. You say they have 11 churches?
Actually, so, 11 churches were our founding churches. Today, we have over 62 churches that help fund us. That's correct.
The county or throughout where?
Throughout the county.
Okay. Thank you.
Absolutely. Commissioner Lainer?
Sir, I heard what you're saying and everything else. Seems like you got it pretty well underhand, and we welcome you for being here.
Thank you.
What do you have on the horizon that's coming as far as any new projects or any new areas that you want to get into? Is there anything that you're looking to move forward with?
Yeah. And I'm a patient person, so I decided when I got here that I was going to put a two-year plan together, and we weren't going to change anything until that time. But COVID kind of threw a wrench in my plans. And so, we've actually launched our, our new program called Operation Outpost. And that, that project is geared towards getting our services and our case management team out to the more rural areas where we simply, where, where the individual citizens simply cannot get to us. So places like Havelock and Harlow, places like Arnold Vanceboro and Bridgeton, where you wouldn't think that that's a transportation barrier, but that bridge creates a transportation barrier for those in Bridgeton if you don't have a car. And so, we launched that program in March, and to date, we have served over 800 individual, unduplicated family units inside Craven County. So, we're going to, we're going to keep on developing that. We're going to keep on doing needs assessments so that we find out where the pockets of need are. And like I said, we will follow the need, and that will, that will spur our innovation.
Okay, next question. By my hearing that and everything else, I mean, how are you set on funding to get these set up and everything else? Are you, are the grants that you're receiving, are you taking us out of your own budget already, or is this an additional cost that you're setting up?
Absolutely not. We don't believe in doing projects without funding, because robbing Peter to pay Paul is not a good business plan. So, all of our new initiatives are funded temporarily by grants. Our job is to make sure that, one, the program is, is actually needed, so that's what the pilot grants are for, and number two, that we can find sustainable funding to keep on doing, to keep on providing the services that are needed in the community. That makes sense?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you for the question. Absolutely.
Commissioner Smith?
Mr. Lainer, I think posed part of my question, because my question was, I thought I heard you say that you are not going to come to the Commissioners every year as we, as we have in the past, that you were planning sustainable programs. Did I mishear you?
That's a good question, Miss Commissioner Smith. I don't think that you misheard me. I, I think that I wasn't clear in, in my delivery. How's that? What I will say is, in order to continue to expand, in order to continue to meet the need, we need to find more funding. And my commitment is to make sure that we're not asking the same funders who have traditionally funded us to keep on giving more and more. I'm going to need our municipal, our municipal partners to keep on partnering with us, though. So, I'm in no way standing before you today saying that in five years, I won't be asking for your support anymore, because I'm pretty sure, if I'm, if I can be candid, in five years, I'll be asking for an inflated support, but hopefully at the same level. Does that make sense?
I understand.
All right.
Commissioner Mitchell, do you have any questions?
No, I don't. Thank you for the presentation. I've met with, with that before. This is great, and I'm glad to hear this plan.
Okay, thank you. Any additional questions? Vice Chair?
No.
Mr. Mark?
The only thing I will say, I heard you mention a lot of great communities, talking about your pilot project and trying to go out and, and help feed in the rural areas, but I did not hear you say one area. And I want you to make sure you add it to your list. And that is where I live at, in Western Craven County, with the Fort Bumble, Dover, Jasper area. There's a lot of good things going on out there now, but we, we do need that assistance from RCS also out there. So please don't forget that area.
I will not forget you, and I'll be in touch so that you can give me a tour, and we can figure out something to do out there.
Sir.
So, thank you for the invitation.
We thank you for coming today, County Manager. Do you have anything?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Zeb. I appreciate you coming.
Thank you, Jack. I appreciate it.
Appreciate your leadership.
Thank you.
Presentation.
Thank you. We'll talk soon, guys.
Thank you. Commissioners, before we go to the consent agenda, I would like to take a minute of Chairman's privilege, and we have some special guests here today from the city of New Bern. I would, at this time, like to refer to the County Manager, if he would introduce him.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. I'm pleased to have the opportunity this morning to introduce two individuals who are with us from the city of New Bern. We have interim City Manager Foster Hughes here this morning. Foster, if you stand up. There he is. And we also have the new Police Chief, Patrick Gallagher, with us this morning. Chief, thank you for being here. I ask him just to be here, give you a short presentation, introduce himself, and we've enjoyed working with Foster so far. We've hit the ground running.
Yes, we did. Good morning, Commissioners. It's great to be here. Just want to let you know, I've got 32 years of public service with municipal and county governments. I can't believe that this year is 32 years I've been doing this. But four and a half years ago, the city of New Bern brought me here to be the Director of Parks and Recreation. It's been a great four years. And then about two months ago, our Board of Aldermen appointed me as interim City Manager, and I've enjoyed that position so far. It's been a great opportunity to meet a variety of citizens, and we look forward to working with our Aldermen and citizens. And Jack and I have had a great relationship so far, and look forward to a continued relationship with the county. And I'd like to introduce Patrick Gallagher. He is our chief. He's been here for almost four months now, and he really hit the ground running as well.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here today, and I won't take up too much of your time, but I do want to give you a little bit of insight as to who I am. Foster was correct, about four months. Actually, it's 121 days, but who's counting? And every one of those 121 days, I've tried to maximize as best possible what I can do for the city of New Bern, and what I can do for the region, specifically Craven County. One of my first objectives when I arrived here was to make myself available to the stakeholders that are already here. And the very first stakeholder I met with was the sheriff, and we had a, what I think was a very positive conversation. We met for the first time in his office, and since then, we have strived to use our resources collectively as a force multiplier to, number one, make this community a safe place, not only to be safe, but for our citizens to feel safe. And, number two, to make the criminal element very uncomfortable. We want the criminal element to know that New Bern and Craven County is not a place for them. I have three major objectives when it comes to law enforcement, and that is to reduce violent crime, to have an impact on drug distribution, and to focus on gang activities. And the sheriff and I are in harmony with those, and I'm sure he has other objectives as well. But I also have the objective that I am a progressive police chief, and I believe in 21st century policing strategies. When I arrived here, I was happy to see Candace, who used to run Promise Place, which is the battered women's shelter, and I met Zeb in that very first week, by the way. After meeting with the sheriff, I met with those two individuals, and many others. So, we are trying to infuse ourselves in the communities, specifically those that seek to be community caretakers, and we want the New Bern Police Department to be a force multiplier in that. I have 31 years of municipal policing experience. I spent those 31 years in Virginia Beach, which is only three hours from here. And although New Bern is somewhat smaller, the same issues that we had there can replicate themselves here, but it's an economy of scale. And I will tell you this, that the New Bern Police Department is a phenomenal lease agency. In fact, the sheriff told me when I first met him, "You have a lot of talent in that police department," and he's absolutely correct. We're an accredited agency, and I'm extremely proud to now be a member of that organization to take over for the previous chief, who I have the utmost respect for. And I look forward to serving the members of this city and this county, and I stand ready to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from the board? Vice Chair?
I don't have a question, Mr. Chairman, but I do have a comment, and that would be, most of my district is in the city of New Bern, a great percentage of it. And one of the things when I ran for office that I wanted to improve was the relationship between the city and the county. It could have been better. And I'm sure that, I'm not speaking for the sheriff, but I don't know about the police portion, but certainly, the County Manager and the former city managers have not worked in harmony as much as they could have. And I'm happy to hear, I know that Foster and the County Manager, Mr. White, have met and are committed to working together, and I'm pleased that your first meeting was with the sheriff, and he had already told me that you had a good meeting. So, I'm excited about that, because we have 100,000-plus people in our county, and over 30,000 of them are in the city of New Bern, right where we're sitting. And we really need to make sure that we're helping each other, not doing this with the other. So, thank you for both of you, and we're excited about both of you taking the reins and what we're going to see in the future.
Thank you, sir.
Any other comments, questions? Again, thank you both for being here. It means a lot to us. We do want to work with you, and we look forward to what's in the future.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, Commissioners, you have your consent agenda before you. We have a long list of items this morning there. The minutes of the July 6, 2021 regular session, tax releases and refunds, the recovery month proclamation, the recreation budget amendment, our department workers' compensation budget amendment, the sheriff honor guard rollover budget amendment, the national night out for JCPC donation to the Sheriff's Department budget amendment. In addition to that, you have a donation for the Blood Connection donation for the National Night Out budget amendment, and then a sheriff's vehicle outfitting budget amendment. Are there any items that the Commissioners desire to pull from the consent agenda this morning?
I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion on the motion? Here none. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll. Commissioner Lainer?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones? Yes, thank you. Next will be departmental matters. The first one we have this morning is emergency services. We have with us Mr. Stanley Kite. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, sir. Thank you, and I appreciate the opportunity to be with you today. First item I have on the agenda today, I'd like to introduce to you Chief Greg Milligan from Fort Bonneville Fire Department. Chief Milligan has two requests to present to you today, so at this time, Chief, if you would.
Good morning. I'm Greg Milligan, Fire Chief, Fort Bonneville Fire Department. First, I'd like to thank y'all for your support in the past. I travel all over the state and see many departments across the state, and I can truly say that we are very blessed in this county, and thank y'all for the support you give for the public safety, to the fire, EMS, and law enforcement. First thing on our requests, we are looking at selling three fire trucks, and we would like to purchase a used fire truck. We felt it was best to ask for permission than ask for forgiveness. So, we have three fire trucks currently at our substation. It's a 1988 FMC engine. The other truck's a 1996 4D1, and then a 1991 homemade tanker. We have entertained looking at a used fire truck somewhere between $90 and $110,000. Half of that would be funded by the sale of these three apparatuses right here. The used fire truck market is very, it's really hard to get a truck at this time. If you find a decent truck, it's usually gone within a week. Case in mind, last week, we found a truck that we liked to put a contingency on. It was located in Pennsylvania, and that truck sold the next day. So, we're here today to ask for permission to grant that we would entertain the purchase of a used truck to replace these three trucks. We have had interest, other departments in the county have expressed interest in purchasing at least one of these fire trucks. The tanker truck, we currently have a grant in with FEMA, and that's at $320,000. That would be a 5% match on our half. We still have not heard back on that, but we're hoping to hear back hopefully 40 years over. That would be a great asset to us. Currently, we only have one liability, and that's on the new truck we purchased last year, and that's $177,000. We had a 15-year loan on that, and we estimate we can pay that off in 12 years. Do y'all have any questions?
Questions from the board?
I would make a motion that we approve this.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Per the county provisions of the county contract, we do not necessarily have to vote on it, but because this is a little bit out of the norm to go ahead and give them the authority to make an offer on the truck, we will entertain that motion. I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Here none. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll, please. Commissioner Lainer?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes, sir. Yes.
All right, thank you. Our second request is, this year, we were awarded the Department of Insurance Grant, and that was going to be the replacement for our brush truck. Current value on the new truck would be $69,463. The state has granted us $30,000, and we would request the match of $30,000 to match the state. The remaining $9,000 would come out of our general fund.
Okay. If we, that is item B correct. Stanley, part of that for the other ones, too?
That is Fort Bonneville's portion of the department.
Okay.
We have some other departments to present, too.
Okay, all right. Jack, do you want to take these one at a time, or do you want to do them all together?
While Mr. Milligan's there, if there's any questions for Fort Bonneville specifically, we can go ahead and take care of that. I believe you have representatives from each department here. Is that correct, Stanley?
Township nine.
Okay.
All right. Questions on this matching grant here from the Board of Commissioners? I just will say that this has been a great asset for some of our smaller fire departments across the county that do not have the tax base to support. If you will take Township three, which Fort Bonneville's in, they have the highest fire tax, and it's not because they want it to be high, it's just because they do not have the tax base there to support. And so, these folks, by the giving of this matching grant, it assists them greatly and to help them further the mission. Also, you see on there for Dover and Township nine, Little Swift Creek, so... Any questions for Fort Bonneville?
I would make a motion, being that they're one of the fire departments that get that grant to be approved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the motion? Here none. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll. Commissioner Lainer?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Milligan. Appreciate you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, next I have Mr. Roger Wetherington with Township nine Fire Department. He would like to present to you as well his North Carolina Department of Insurance Grant.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. How are y'all?
Good. Good.
Thank y'all for everything that y'all do for us, but just let me give you a little of history. Greg didn't talk about this, but his department and our department both have just had our ratings lowered. One reason that we could lower our ratings is because y'all stand behind us and help us with these grants. To date, not for what I'm asking for, but to date, we have received, let me find it again here, $87,973 from the state of North Carolina in grants. And I'm glad to say, up until today, y'all have matched each and every one of those. The thing about it is, for every dollar we spent, we got a dollar. And what I'm asking for today, we applied for a grant of $29,972.50 for new turnout gear and new radios and equipment to better improve our department. We have been very fortunate in that we are also having, we get a rescue grant every year, and y'all saw the picture in the paper and all where we bought a new generator to serve the community and all. So, we, it's just a pleasure to work with the guys and girls in our fire department and know that we got support from the county like we do.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Wetherington?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the budget amendment of $29,972.50. Any discussion on the motion? Here none. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll. Commissioner Lainer?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Commissioner Booker, also, I want, you're talking about you're in town, and I want you to know that Stanley and the chief of New Bern have been working real, real close this last year to improve the relationship between the city firemen and the county firemen, and you just can't believe how much it's gone better in the last year.
Well, that's great to hear. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have some other departments that, because of conflict, one is Little Swift Creek Volunteer Fire Department due to the chief working shift work and some of his other members' inability to attend today. They asked that I present on their behalf the request that they have also received a grant from the North Carolina Department of Insurance for $29,729.50. I do have a list, if you don't have that in your agenda, of all the items, that they have a large shopping list of things that were approved by the North Carolina Department of Insurance. And I would just like to say that these items are items that have to be on the approved list in order for them to receive that funding. So they, too, are asking for you to match their grant in the amount of $29,729.50.
All right, what's desirable?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Here none. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll, and this for a budget amendment for Little Swift Creek of $29,729.50. Commissioner Lainer?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
I also have to present to you today, on behalf of the Dover Fire Chief, who ironically, we're talking about North Carolina Department of Insurance grant funding, they are actually at his station today during the North Carolina Department of Insurance inspection for his ratings. So, Chief White couldn't be here today, so he asked that I express his apologies for not being able to be personally here before you today, but asked that I also inform you, he also received a grant for $29,909.50. And likewise, we also have a copy of the approved equipment list that the Dover Volunteer Fire Department is requesting that you match this grant in the amount of $29,909.50.
All right, board, what's your desire?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the motion? Here none, and the motion is for a budget amendment of $29,909.50 to Dover Volunteer Fire Department. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll. Commissioner Lainer?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Before I depart today, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to inform you that Vanceboro also received a grant this year, but they decided that they had enough local budgeted funds to cover it, but I just wanted to make sure you're aware, they also received a Department of Insurance grant in the amount of $18,357, but they did not request you do any additional funding on their behalf with the money they had on hand. I would like to thank you as a board for all the support you've done over the years for these grants, because, as has already been stated here today, it's very apparent, very obvious, to helping acquire this equipment, helping maintain this inventory of equipment, and helping these departments modernize their steadiness in operations. As a result of that, you're seeing a direct lowering of the insurance rates throughout these rural communities. these rural communities, which I would challenge is very hard to do in most rural areas in eastern North Carolina. These departments are actually providing coverages, they're not only good fire protective services, but it's also an end result, helping those homeowners that qualify for reduction in their homeowner's insurance. And I personally would like to thank you for that support.
Stanley, if I could ask you, when will they receive these funds?
They're in the process that, once they have to make their purchases, they have to surrender the items back to the county showing those purchases have been made and paid for, then at that point in time, it'll be up to finance, just when the reimbursements go back out.
Got you. All right, thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Chairman, I would just like to say that District one, I believe, has the lowest tax rate in the county. That would be the advanced drug community and Little Swift Creek, if I'm not mistaken.
Commissioner Lainer?
No, I want to see Stanley out.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for Stanley? All right, thank you. Thank you all for being here this morning. Appreciate it. All right. Next, we have a recreation acceptance of a bait foundation grant for Rocky Run Playground. Good morning, Mr. Billy.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
So we're here to talk a little bit about Rocky Run Park this morning. We've got a five-acre park that services the Rocky Run community as well as surrounding communities, and within the boundaries of the park, we have several, you know, what I would call upgrades that we've done. I'm going to show a few pictures to you in just a minute, but we've got a basketball court, a picnic shelter, playground equipment, and open space, which I really like in any park. You've got to have some open space. So I think Steve's got a few pictures for you. I just want to show you some of the recent upgrades. First, the shelter, that was in the budget year 2018. We upgraded the shelter, included a vinyl wrap, some new electric, new recess lighting, just improved the shelter tremendously, which since then has also added to the number of reservations as well. In the year 2019, we upgraded the basketball court. I think there's a picture up there. So we increased the size of the court. We also added new basketball goals as well. That has been a significant increase in participation since that basketball court's been upgraded. We also added a new climber, which I believe is the next picture there. We did that as well in 2019 to replace one of the older climbers. In 2021, our staff installed a brand-new swing set, which you'll see on the far right of that swing set. When I talk about high-back swing seats, that's what this, that improves the likelihood of having somebody with mobility needs, also that toddler age that can't quite get on the smaller swings as well, get on that swing set, too. So it's a nice addition, and then we also provided borders around the equipment. As you can see, we're trying to bring everything together, and that's our hope, is to also improve the social aspects of play as well. And in 2022, we're going to add a camera system. That last picture there that he had was just a look at one of the pieces that we're going to replace as well. In 2022, we're going to add a camera system, and we're also requesting a match here today to replace the three pieces of equipment you see there. Steve, you'll go back one just for a second. That's the slide, the climber to the right, and the little play system just behind it are going to be the three pieces we look to replace. And now, I think in the 2022 budget process, he's got a picture of what the new play system will look like. So as you can see, it offers opportunities for play more substantial than what we have now, for sure, additional swings, rope climbing, units that you can reach from ground level as well, and just a bunch of ways to get on that unit. So it's going to be a fun addition to Rocky Run Park if we can get it done, and we identified it in our budget process of 2022. May of this year, we applied for, the grant was awarded to Craven County to upgrade this play system, and we're looking forward to seeing big things at Rocky Run, already seeing a lot more play there. But the request today is to accept the grant and request a match. The timeline for the project, everybody is a little slower on getting materials now. I wish I could say it'd be done tomorrow, but we will order as quickly as the paperwork passes. It's probably a three- to four-month wait on equipment. Once that equipment's in, it'll be installed, so I would hope late year at the latest is what we would be looking at as far as the timeline for this project.
All right. Questions for Mr. Wilton? Commissioner Smith?
It looks like a outstanding project. My question is, the reason for getting rid of the old equipment?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. So the lifetime of an equipment or equipment that we purchased is about 15 to 20 years older equipment, but when you walk up to it, all the plastic is starting to fray and pull away, and you, there's, it comes to a point where you can't do but so much. We can kind of patch it, but we can't put it back together at that point. So all three pieces are at a point of replacement. I think it was early 2000s when we purchased that, so we're right at about 17 or 18 years, I believe, on that equipment, which is about the lifetime of a playground equipment.
I have one other question.
Yes, ma'am.
How long has that park been there?
Yes, ma'am. Well, it's been in existence for a very long time, but as far as the county's involvement, the late 1980s was when Craven County worked with the Rocky Run Neighborhood Association at that point to take over essentially the maintenance and the leadership of that park. And I arrived in '95, so at that point, it was, we had been in Rocky Run Park for about seven years or so.
Thank you. Commissioner Lainer?
Yeah. Bates has been real good to us.
Yes, sir.
For all of our projects, are we putting any type of plaque or donation after recognizing them?
Yeah, and a lot of our play systems, we have a little part, a little thing that recognizes all of our donors, including Bates. Our, to date, and I can give you an approximate number, because we do track this, we're over $800,000 in grant donations from, and that's been about in 20-year period. Really, my thought is, when we get to that million-dollar number, which I, you know, hope happens at some point in the future, that we really do do a nice recognition of that foundation, because that is a lot of just donations to our projects and grant matches that we've had over the years.
I mean, you've done real well with them. I mean, they've been, they've been real good to us and everything you've applied for.
Yes, sir. They have been. A first-class group, and they like what we're doing, and we certainly are appreciative of them.
Thank you.
All right. Other questions? If not, do I have a motion that we accept the grant and approve the budget amendment?
To move.
Of $70,000 total? Or I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the motion? Here none. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lainer?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Billy, we thank you for going after these grants, applying for them, and for what you're doing. We appreciate you.
Well, thank your support as well. Have a good day.
Next, we have the Sheriff, Honorable Chip Hughes, who is here. He's got right many budget amendments this morning. Good morning, sir.
Sir, good morning. Chairman, Vice Chair, Commissioners, appreciate y'all allowing us to come before you with these, I think we've got five budget amendments. These budget amendments are going to consist of rollovers that was previously approved in a budget as well as donated monies from the public. The first one, if you will, is Attachment 5A in the amount of $14,994. We ordered speakers and adapters for vehicles purchased for physical year '21. All of the upfitting of these vehicles has been completed and paid for. The only upfitting that remains outstanding are the speakers and adapters, and we are requesting that those funds roll over from the previous ore equipment needed.
All right. Questions for the Sheriff on this budget amendment for the vehicle fit and rollover? Here none. Do I have a motion?
To move.
I have a motion and a second. This is for a budget amendment of $14,994. Any further discussion on the motion? Here none. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lainer?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
The next one, 5B, this one's going to be in the amount of $40,795 move funds that were allocated in physical year '21 through purchase orders. In this one particular, I've been waiting on ammunition for our office for over a year. So, and that, too, has been because of COVID. As with many of these vendors, when we're ordering this equipment, it has been nearly impossible to get it in a timely manner. In many cases, it's had rolled over into a new budget. So still waiting on ammunition, which, of course, has caused a huge problem for us, especially when we have to go to Academy and purchase a minimal amount of ammunition just to qualify new hires. So it's causing a big problem for, but this is another one here in the amount of $40,795 for equipment that's been purchased. That equipment's body armor, weapon packages and ammunition, radio accessories, and radios.
All right. Any questions? Here none. Do I have a motion?
To move.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this budget amendment for $40,795? Here none. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lainer?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Commissioners, the next one is C. This is in the amount of $68,394, looking to move funds that were allocated in physical '21 through purchase orders. These orders have not been completed due, once again, various reasons such as back orders from our vendors. These funds were allocated from the SRO account lines.
All right. Any questions on this budget amendment?
Go over to me.
Here none. Do I have a motion?
To move.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? This is for a budget amendment of $68,394. Here no further discussion. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lainer?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
D is SRO grant rollover funds in the amount of $12,362 move funds that were allocated in FY '21 through purchase orders for the school safety grant. These purchase, once again, these purchase orders have not been completed due to various reasons such as back orders from our vendors. This is going to be for SRO equipment in the amount of $12,362.
All right. Any questions on the SRO grant rollover?
Mr. Chairman, is this, any of this covered by COVID?
I don't know, Commissioner Mark, I don't know if this is COVID money or not.
Okay.
The, I knew the SRO grant, that was a specific grant that we got through the state.
I think it's just your traditional SRO grant. I don't believe it had any COVID money in this one.
To move.
All right. I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
All right, got a second. Any further discussion on the motion? This is for $12,362. Here no other discussion. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lainer?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Commissioners, the last one, E is K-9 donation rollover funds in the amount of $14,651. These are unused donated funds that were made to the sheriff's office in FY '21 to FY '22. These funds were donated by various citizens and business from multiple divisions, such as, in this case, the K-9 Division. And like I said, that's in the amount of $14,651 in donated funds we want to roll over.
All right. Any questions on the K-9 donations?
Not on the donations, but I have a question. How many dogs do you have?
Commissioner, we have five.
Hi.
One search, article searched dog, which is a bloodhound, and four narcotics and patrol dogs.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any additional questions?
No.
Do I have a motion?
To move.
I have a second. Any further discussion on the motion? This is for a budget amendment of $14,651. Here no further discussion. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lainer?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Sheriff, you have anything you need to share with us this morning?
Well, I would like to introduce my executive assistant, Mrs. Evelyn Ochoa. She is my right hand. She is, has a great working relationship with our county manager's executive staff as well. I'm blessed every day to have her. She takes so much off of my plate, and she does a phenomenal job of running that office out there on a day-to-day, and I wanted to publicly thank her and embarrass her in front of everybody, but also I wanted y'all to meet her and just, she has really set the bar high out there for all admin staff, and she just does a great job day in and day out for us.
Welcome aboard. Glad to have you.
Nice to meet you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Sheriff. Any questions for the Sheriff? Commissioner Lainer?
No. I'd like to have, if possible, if the staff is under the budget somehow, that asterisk, I'll put an asterisk beside this for next year's budget, so we don't think this is a $150,000 increase we gave him this year. This is a carryover from last year, so his budget doesn't look inflated.
We'll remind the Sheriff.
No, I think the public and us, we need to know as well that he's not getting anything he doesn't already have, but when it comes into the budget, it's going to look like it's bigger than everything else. I just want a little note on that.
Got it.
All right, thank you. Next item on the departmental matters would be social services, the CARES Act funding rollover budget amendment. You have Ms. Andrews Brown. Good morning.
Good morning. Morning, Chairman, Vice Chairman, and Commissioners. Um, as, if you're unfamiliar, I'm Alyssa Andrews Brown and I am the Director of Craven County Senior Services, Senior Center over on George Street. We are Division of Department of Social Services. I have with me, um, Tanya Davis. She is my program manager. She's the program manager of adult and senior services. Um, this morning, we are requesting the approval to roll over some CARES Act funding, which is the COVID relief funding in the amount of forty-three thousand two hundred and fifty-one dollars. And this is, um, ongoing improvement at the Senior Center to improve our services in delivering meals to the seniors.
Okay, any questions? Hear no questions, do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Have a motion in a second for the budget amendment of forty-three thousand two hundred and fifty-one dollars. Hear no further discussion on the motion. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll. Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
We thank both of you for being here and for what you do.
Thank you, thank you so much for having us.
Have a good day. Next item is facilities, the Craven County Courthouse interior, exterior repairs. Mr. Hodges? Good morning, sir.
Hey, good morning, Board.
Good morning.
Uh, so in February of twenty twenty-one, the Board of Commissioners directed staff to work with our architects, Oakley Callier Architects, as representatives here in the room, to develop a plan to address the water intrusion and masonry restoration issues at the historic Craven County Courthouse. Utilizing the resources of Barn Hill Contracting, who is the construction manager at risk that's been working on hurricane floors repairs to the courthouse, a plan to address these issues has been developed. A number of onsite meetings and multiple virtual conferences have been held with the, with representatives of the North Carolina Department of Natural and Cultural Resources, Historic Preservation Office, and the City of New Bern Historic Preservation Administrator. Our views in the field have been favorable and accepting of the proposed methodology. We'll put one of Commissioner Liner's asterisks right here on this line. I'm going to come back to that one. The plan is presented. We'll have Barn Hill Contracting with Heritage Restoration for exterior masonry work, Superior Plaster for the interior plaster work, and Proctor Paint Company for the needed painting. Additionally, they will have a third-party engineer, Atlas Engineering, to independently verify all the work being done is in compliance with all agreed-upon standards. And OCA will also continue to provide project coordination and documentation as the restoration project progresses. The next step for the Board of Commissioners will be to approve a project ordinance and related budget amendment as shown in your attachment in the amount of seven hundred twenty-nine thousand one hundred and three dollars and authorize the execution of a change order to Barn Hill Contracting's contract in the amount of six seventy-five one oh three and a change order to OCA's design services agreement in the amount of fifty-four thousand dollars. As a reminder, when this project was bid earlier, the range of prices were six hundred and ten thousand to one point nine million for just the exterior brickwork. Now, I'm going to go back to my asterisk. So between the time that, um, this was put into the agenda and today, we actually got confer, we actually got a notification from the city that they weren't going to approve the water repellent coating on the exterior of the brickwork. This was after having an onsite meeting with both the, uh, the local, the local guy from the City of New Bern and the state, um, the state representative. Everybody looking at everybody, having all the subject matter experts on site, giving us thumbs up, saying it all looks good. All, it's all procedural at this point, nothing to worry about. We asked them for our certificate of, um, our, um, I forget, COA, I knows what it's called. That they, uh, they said, well, we'll give it all to you except for the water repellent. Uh, so what we're asking the Board do is to move forward with this item as presented and go ahead and approve the budget amendment in this amount. Uh, that way, we can go ahead and get started on the repointing, which is the re-masonry, the, all the areas that need to be filled in as we continue to fight the battle for the, um, for the water repellent coating.
All right, just let me ask this. So you want the budget amendment to stay the same? You're asking for the same amount?
That way, if slash when we go ahead and get that approvals, we can just go ahead and continue on with the process. The masonry work has a timeframe that it's got to be done in because if you don't get, and this is all going to be one guy doing this by hand. It's a bit of an artistry type, um, type endeavor. Because it has to cure out before it gets cold, this work has to be done by December. So in order to move forward and get that work done, go ahead and mobile, get them mobilized now and get them started on that, it gives that envelope time to dry out because you wouldn't want to be applying the actual, uh, the actual repellent until that timeframe anyway. Say anything different? Okay.
All right, questions from the Board?
Can I add a couple of things?
Yes, please.
And Gene, I think you touched on it, but the difference from when we talked in February with this bid and some of the bids you saw when you were looking just at the exterior side is that this actually includes the interior work. So you've got a brick masonry on the outside and you've got plaster on the inside. And so from Gene and I's perspective, while this is a couple, ten, twenty thousand more than what we were seeing just for exterior, it also includes interior. So that's a pretty good deal here. Um, the repellent, uh, obviously wasn't the news we wanted to hear, particularly after we'd somewhat favorable responses on site. However, I don't think we've given up that battle, but we've got to fix the brick. And that's the main focus here is the pointing, the mortar and all the joints and getting the plaster back together. I'm sure many of you have heard from the clerk of court on the inside, uh, the plaster is sort of removing itself from the brick and we need to go ahead and address that. I think repellent's something, Gene, once we get done with everything, we'll keep fighting that fight. But in any event, even if you approve the budget amendment at this amount, if we can't do it, we're not going to spend it. But we'd like to have the money there in case it's ever approved, that we don't have to come back and stop the project to get there.
All right, questions?
But how, okay. We're going to approve the amendment for the dollar value and you're going to start the pointer guy working. And you're going to start people inside the plaster work working.
You don't, you, you won't be able to start the inside plaster work until you, till you enclose the outside. So all of the mortar work has to be finished first before you start the plaster work.
But that's what I'm getting at. If you're not going to be able to seal it, what good is it going to do to start the plaster work? I mean, you got the, you got the mortar and everything going into joints, but if that's not sealed and we don't get authority to seal it, are we going to start the plaster work ahead of time? Are we going to wait until we get approval and seal the outside before we do the interior work?
I think, uh, my, this is my, my desire is let's, let's go ahead and get started on, on the mortaring work because it's going to have to be done anyway. Let's see how far we can get down the road to get some approval because we're not going to be able to start the mortaring work or the plaster work on the interior until that December timeframe anyway. That gives me four or five months or whatever to try to make some hay and make some ground up and get some approvals for the, for the, uh, repellent.
Okay.
There's an inherent bias against repellent from a historic preservation standpoint. I read some literature, most of it was dated, some of it twenty-five, thirty years old, um, that actually the repellent can, can cause more problems. I think with some of the modernization of the product, some of the things we've seen on site, I don't believe the modern view of it is there yet. And I think we're going to try to prove that case. Interesting point, I spoke with Foster last week about this, you know, from his perspective. And they're having the exact same challenge with City Hall. Brick, which is older, getting some water intrusion, plaster on the inside, plaster letting itself go once it gets wet. So I think we've got a partner. I think this is going to have to be dealt with though because most of these local preservation groups look to the state. And it appears that's where we're challenged at at the moment.
I want to go back to you, but I just want to make sure we get that straight because there's those that are probably listening and we stated the city. Our concern is not with the Board of Aldermen, it's not with the, the city manager, it's with the historical society, preservation society of New Bern and the state of North Carolina, correct?
Correct. And I would, I would view this group as sort of a, um, I'm trying to think of a good analogy, almost like an authority, where the city may make the appointments, but they've got some independent decision-making ability and they look to the experts at the state. But again, when they're sending, the state's sending Gene things down, I saw one from ninety-six, one from ninety-eight. I mean, this isn't modern literature and the products have changed since then. The concept isn't different, meaning a repellent keeps water, it's like turtle wax, Gene used that great example. You whack something up and it beads up and runs down versus sitting there and soaking through. We've just got to, I, I can't believe that Craven County, City of New Bern, only two places have this problem, particularly in East North Carolina.
What we want those that are listening to us is, again, our call is not with, with this, the Board of Aldermen, but we want folks to recognize, citizens of this county to recognize that you have an unelected board at, is trying to dictate to us that we cannot put repellent on a building. As a result, it's causing trouble with the clerk of court's office. Um, she's having to write the time, she's got plastic on the wall trying to keep moisture from coming in. And if they don't work with us on this, it's going to cost us significantly more money to deal with this. And it even going to get to a point, uh, if they don't deal with us, and I'm stepping out on a limb by saying this, and I'm not saying it as chairman, I say it as an individual commissioner, but we may have to start looking at other locations. They're going to force us out of downtown and trying to do something that they want to say is, uh, to look pretty. So I, I'd say to those that are listening to this, we need help in, um, carrying our message to this unelected board. So Vice Chair?
I would just add to that, that my understanding is that the treatment that we're asking them to approve will be invisible.
Correct.
There will be no, nobody would know the day after it was done that it was done. So there's no logical reason for this to be denied. It's not like we're going to put a new coating on the building that's going to change the way it looks. Isn't going to change anything. So I just want to make that point.
I mean, in the packet, uh, we included where we did a mock wall on that, on that meeting on July the second and I challenge anybody to go find a difference in that right now versus what was done. And Mr. Jack was exactly right because when we sprayed water on it, it, it was just like turtle wax. When you used to put turtle wax on your car, it beat it up and you could see right beside where it just saturates. So it's, it's, it's a needed product. It's what you need to keep this going into the future.
I, I would just add as a former Alderman and as a resident of the City of New Bern, this is one of many, um, decisions that this group makes that I would have to say are illogical. And so, um, like you made the point, they're unelected. They're appointed by Aldermen over a period of time. And, uh, it, it's, uh, it, it's important that we maintain the history of our city and that we don't allow, allow buildings to be modified in ways that, um, that are detrimental. But this is not one. And so, um, I, I echo what you said. The citizens need to understand that we've got an unelected board that's, uh, in my opinion, stepped over the bounds.
All right, Sheriff, for me, I think, I think we need to add to make sure the citizens realize, you, you said it's a significant cost. I think the significant cost should be put in relationship to the taxpayer who's going to have to pick up this bill and that's probably about a three and a half cent tax increase paid for this if we have to do it the way they're saying we're going to do, have to do it, compared to what we could get by with for probably a third of that or a quarter of that. So taxpayers are going to look at a three and a half cent tax increase if this has to go.
Point well taken, Commissioner Liner. Other comments?
I would just, Mr. Chairman, if you, when you review, continue to review the materials, Mr. Hodges included for you, feel a note on the gentleman's proposal, uh, for the restoration company. There's, there's the school of thought of something called a sealer, which seals the envelope, and something called a repellent. We're talking about a repellent, which repels the water, not seals the envelope. And there's a big difference. They see everything as a seal. That's where I think we have some ground to try to prove our case.
Other comments, questions? Hear or none, do I have a motion that we approve the budget amendment of seven hundred twenty-nine thousand one hundred and three dollars? Um, this is to prove the, uh, ordinance amendment and the related budget amendments authorize staff to execute change orders to Barn Hill Contracting and OCA to perform the in, interior and exterior repairs. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right.
So moved.
I have that motion, I have a second. Any further discussion on the motion? Hear or none, Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll. Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe? Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Board.
Appreciate it.
All right, Commissioners, next we have on the agenda appointments. First, we have, uh, the pending appointments. Are there any that Commissioners have to bring before the Board today on the pending? I do have one there at your, um, desk there you should see for Recreation Advisory Committee for District Two, the district in which I am elected in. I have asked that this be deferred for the last two meetings. I did have a candidate, a citizen who is interested in serving, Mr. Russell Caton, um, who lives in District Two. And I would ask that his name be, uh, considered for this position.
So moved.
All right, I have that nomination. Are there additional nominations from the floor? Hear or none, we will accept Mr. Caton for the Recreation Advisory Committee by acclamation. Are there any other? Hear or none, under pending, we will go to current. The Fireman's Relief Board Fund Board of Trustees, we have there several names. The first, Mr. Dan New, Township Three Fire Department. I would ask that he be reappointed. Are there additional nominations? Hear or none, he will be accepted by acclamation. Next would be Mr. Mark Dale from Township Eight, Rims Fire Department. I would ask that he would be, uh, reappointed. Are there any additional nominations from the Board? Hear or none, he will be accepted by acclamation. And then we've had on here for several weeks, um, the appointment from Township Two, Little Swift Green.
They appointed a?
I've contacted Mr. Kite this week, uh, last week and, uh, he was, he never got back to me.
Okay.
But that's still the case. They're waiting on their, uh, new fire chief to be installed.
All right, we'll just defer that?
Yeah.
Is that all right? All right, next would be the Emergency Medical Services Advisory Committee. Um, we have there Mr. Brian McGuire from the Briston EMS. Commissioner Mark?
Yeah, I would reappoint that.
Okay, we have a, at, a nomination for Mr. McGuire. Are there additional nominations from the floor? Hear or none, he will be accepted by acclamation. And then next would be Ms. Michelle Smith from Rescue Thirty, New Bern, Craven County. And I would ask that she be reappointed. Are there any additional nominations? Hear or none, we would accept her by acclamation. Next would be the upcoming terms expiring in August. You see those before you there. Are there any others appointments to be made today? Hear or none, next would be the County Attorney's Report, Mr. Eric Grady. Good morning, sir.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good morning. I have, uh, two items for your consideration, uh, this morning. The first involves the sale of, uh, county-owned real estate acquired through the tax foreclosure, uh, process. This is final approval after, uh, the upset bid process for property located on Gatewood Drive, parcel number eight dash two zero zero dash E dash oh thirty-two. The property is out in Riverbend. We have a final bid of three thousand, uh, dollars. Um, the original taxes and cost of foreclosure were two thousand seven hundred seventeen dollars and fifty-two cents. The tax value of the property is six thousand dollars. We would, uh, recommend that the Board give final approval to this so we can deliver the deed and, uh, finish the transaction.
All right, Commissioner Mitchell, this is, uh, in Riverbend as stated. Are there any concerns, questions?
Uh, no, sir, no, Mr. Chair, there's not and I recommend that we accept this as well.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Hear or none, the motion is to adopt a resolution for the conveyance of this property in Riverbend. All in favor, signify, say an aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Pass.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, the second item, uh, this morning deals with, uh, redistricting. Uh, everyone's favorite topic that we get to tackle every ten years or so. Um, we have a proposal in the agenda packet, uh, for the county to, uh, retain both a demographer, who is with us this morning. Blake, raise your hand. Uh, joins us from, uh, Asheville as well as the, uh, law firm of Pointer and Spruil based in Rocky Mount, uh, Charlotte and Raleigh.[1567.92] as the law firm of Pointer and Spruill, based in Rocky Mount, Charlotte, and Raleigh. Blake has a presentation for us this morning to walk through, some of the things that he does and how hopefully he'll be assisting the county with this. We've really got at least a two-step process. One is to review the citizen data, or the census data, and make sure that our districts are within certain parameters, more or less equal when it comes to population, which can be a challenge when you look at some of the information in the packet. You can see parts of the county have actually lost population, and then other parts have actually gained population. And this is a very detailed process, and it can come down to census blocks and individual streets, as some of you guys know from past experiences. Then, once we have what I will call the demographics more or less straight, there's a legal review to make sure that the proposed redistricting passes constitutional muster. Blake has extensive experience in this area. He's worked with local governments for a very long time. Pointer and Spruill has not only the general expertise, but they consistently and constantly litigate these types of cases over constitutional challenges. So our alternatives are basically to try to stand up this expertise internally through the purchase of software programs and training and things like that, and then to, you know, do the legal part of it. I think we could do it internally with the county. I don't know that we could do it as efficiently for the cost that is proposed today. And this has become time-sensitive, the delays with the census information from the pandemic and otherwise, and this is not something that folks will be able to learn in a month or two. So it's my recommendation, and I think staff concurs, that going out and securing this level of expertise at this price is a really good deal for the county. It is very similar in cost to what we saw 10 years ago, so finally inflation is working for us and not against us. The proposal is before the Board for approval today. I might suggest that we hear from our demographer with his overview. Then we could, of course, have any questions the Board has, and then hopefully you will consider the proposal and take action on it if that meets with your approval, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
It's good to be here. Thank you for having me and giving me a moment to explain a little bit more on top of what I think was a good introduction. So if we could get to the next slide. The way that I structured this presentation, I will try to be very brief. I know we're at the end of a meeting, so this is, in journalism, they talk about the six questions being who, what, when, where, why, and how. For the purposes of this, we're going to move the order a little bit. If we could have the next slide, just save the when and the how until the very last. So next slide, we'll be looking at, these questions, again, very quickly just running through, and I'm happy to answer other questions if people have them at the end. So next slide. The who starts with you. The next slide will show that. Of course, ultimately, the Commissioners are the ones who are going to be providing the guidance on the decisions we make. We, and I should say, should the Commission choose to retain us, but ultimately, there are going to be questions of criteria and guidelines and things like that, where we will be seeking your input in a number of instances. On top of that, next slide, we also will be working closely with staff. On top of that, next slide, we encourage public input, at least one public hearing, and also other ways for the public to be able to communicate what they think should be priorities or considerations. And then lastly, next slide, that's us. And Attorney Grady mentioned the Attorneys from Pointer Spruill, as well as myself, but there is a larger team called the Local Redistricting Service. On the next slide, we can see there are eight of us, essentially, from different places in the state. And on the next slide, you can see the Attorneys from Pointer Spruill. One more slide. Caroline, I believe, on the left, who's based in Raleigh, is, I think, watching on YouTube right now. She's keeping an eye on the meeting, and that's Tara on the right. Tara Bright is based in Charlotte. And I should say that Caroline Mackey on the left, and they're the Attorneys, and I would second what Attorney Grady said about their expertise in this area. Next slide. What is basically redrawing the districts? If we go to the next slide, you'll see these are the current districts. I imagine these are very familiar, and it sounds like a couple of you were around 10 years ago when this process happened. And the key crux of this is to look at the population and understand whether these districts need to be redrawn, and if so, how. There is a possibility, but I think it's a very remote possibility, that once the census numbers come out, it'll turn out that all these districts have an acceptable population. And if we can look at the next slide, to give a very simplified version of the math here, let's say that the population of the county is 105,000. Divide that by seven, each district should have approximately 15,000 people. So that's what the ideal would be, and it may mean redrawing districts. Next slide will show the existing districts again. And before we go to the, I'm going to pause here for a moment just to make sure, the following slide was meant to be taken with a little bit of humor. I drew up a sample redistricting plan, which is not to be taken too seriously. If we can look at the next slide. This is just one example of how districts could be redrawn. I hope people will see this and recognize this is probably highly unlikely to be something that folks would be happy with.
Actually, it looks pretty good.
Go with that.
Well, somebody might say, you know, they're all, they are connected, they're, you know, they're sort of uniform shapes, and every district would have a connection to the, you know, from the northwest part of the county all the way to the southeast. But we'll talk briefly about some reasons this might not be what we end up going with. Next slide. The why? The basic reason is federal law requiring one person, one vote. So that's why the districts, the voters need to have basically equal representation, equal number of constituencies for each Commissioner. One more slide. And the reason it needs to be done every 10 years is that population change varies not just across the state, as we see here. And I'll just briefly show this slide to point out that the darker greens indicate more growth, and then the yellow is slight reduction, the orange is a more serious reduction. And here you can actually see it not just with the color, but the height of the county. But if we look at the next slide, which shows actual block groups, so these are smaller, more granular census units, you can see that almost every county has yellows and oranges as well as greens. So, and if we look at Craving County, here, and you can see there are both oranges and yellows and greens, as is true in many of these counties. So that's what causes this to need a rebalance. Next slide. Where? This is the key question, and the data are supposed to come out on August 16th, less than a month from now. We'll be looking at a timeline in just a moment. But this is the key question. If you look at the next slide, this is more zoomed in, and you can see, and Attorney Grady had referred to this, there are, we've got dark greens and yellows and oranges as well, and the ones that are essentially, that don't have either color, those are block groups where the population has stayed about the same. I should point out, these are based on estimates. These are some statisticians' best guess, but until we get the numbers next month, we can't rely on these too heavily, but they may give us a decent idea. Next slide. Okay, the how? There's a process here, and if we can look at the next slide. Imagine you were asking me to buy a car for you, and I said, great, I got this excellent 2018 GMC Yukon, but it turns out that what you really were looking for in a car was something that got great fuel efficiency and was easy to park. This would not be the right vehicle. So similar to that, if you're looking for us to provide the services, we need to know what your priorities will be in terms of the process. So one of the things that we will be talking about, and we can start having these discussions in the near term, even before the data come out, is what are the appropriate things to be looking for in good districts, the kind of districts that you all would like to have and your citizens would like to have. So the next slide is a reminder of this kind of goofy district plan, and we could talk about how these districts are not compact, or we could talk about how they split communities of interest, or how they don't follow precinct lines, or how they split municipal incorporated areas. So those are just an example of some of the standards or guidelines that folks often consider when drawing new districts. Next slide. I just put this slide in to say, I've got more information at the end of the slide deck. Certainly, if people have questions, we could talk more about criteria, or more about sort of the analysis that goes into the process and some of the layers of information we'll be looking at. Next slide. One thing I should point out is that one thing we will not consider is partisan data. Our organization is committed to a nonpartisan, transparent process, so we will not be looking at Ds and Rs or red and blue. That is not part of how we work, and it would be in the contract that you all are looking to approve, that we do not consider a drawing of districts that would give partisan advantage in any way. Next slide. When? As Attorney Grady mentioned, this is a more compressed timetable than in the past. If we look at the next slide, you can see, the print is a little small, but basically this is showing, we started in June because that is when some of the initial analysis we were doing in creating this timeline. But we, you can see, we're actually now in, you know, toward the end of July, so there's less than a month until the data come out. There will be some time, the census data is being released in a sort of untabulated form, like a raw form. So there will be, this time here is indicating that from August 16th to near the end of August, there will be some time needed to assemble and tabulate the data, which leaves about 11 and a half weeks until the November 17 deadline. So that's the period, this is the period we'll be looking at for draft plans and public input and that kind of thing. Although, again, there can be public input about the criteria or the considerations in advance. Next slide. That's a very quick overview. As I said, there are some more slides if folks have questions, but I would be happy to discuss anything that would be helpful.
Right, question from the Board. Commissioner Smith?
You said, one of the questions was if the redistricting followed precinct lines. What determine precinct lines, one, and number two is, do they, the precinct lines always remain the same? Can they be changed as well?
Great question, and this is something that the Board of Elections are the experts in, but essentially...
The Board of Elections determine the precinct lines?
Yes. My understanding is it's the County Board of Elections in conjunction with the State Board of Elections, and they can change occasionally, but they try to keep them consistent, keep voters' experience consistent. And until quite recently, if there was, let's say, one precinct went from having 2,000 people to 5,000 people, they would split it in half so that the polling place wouldn't get overwhelmed, there wouldn't be too many people trying to vote at the same place on Election Day. But with early voting, with so many people voting early, there have been fewer issues with overcrowding at a polling place on Election Day. So I have not verified whether Craving County has had changes in precincts since 10 years ago, but if there have been, I would be surprised if there were more than two or three.
I'm not going to, it raises another question with me, but I'll be quiet as someone else asks a question.
Right, Commissioner Mark?
Yeah, you mentioned that at this point, you don't know what the figures will be. I remember the last election, I think we broke the districts down into approximately 14, 700 people in each district. So you're using a figure of 1,500, there'd be very little change then. One question I have, and I don't know if it's for you, but I do know that one of our legislators has suggested, because the municipalities are not going to be able to get this on time, you're going to have to do it next year, which would mean that the county would have to pay for the election of those people in 2023, I guess, to be holding on.
So there was a bill passed, it was Senate Bill 722, and that's actually on the timeline where we created that timeline that you saw, started in around June 22nd, I believe, was when that became law. And yes, for municipalities that, only municipalities that have true election districts, so a lot of smaller municipalities don't do districted elections, all their elections are at large. I know that New Bern has true election districts, and they are doing redistricting as well. So they would be an example of, I believe, they normally would have odd-year municipal elections, but this time, their elections have been pushed into 2022. As far as the payment arrangement, I can't speak to that. I just, I'm afraid I can't.
All right.
You want me to take a shot at that one?
Yes.
So I think Blake's right. I think you got the difference of the ones that run at large and the ones that run by district.
Yeah.
There was a local bill filed for everybody, I believe it excluded New Bern and maybe two other of the municipalities, which they'll continue to run on some alternative schedule, but the remaining of them would run in conjunction with the county-wide election, which at that point, they would not share the costs. Or typically, when you have a municipal election, the municipalities pay for it. So if they're running in a, where everything's already open, they don't have to pay.
I understand that. It's just that New Bern's got 30,000 people.
I'm not sure how New Bern works because they're still running on an alternative timeline. They may still have to pay for theirs, because, you know, they've got, and here, you got to help me, their election's a lot different than most of the other municipalities in how they run. They'll actually run much earlier than have the runoff period and all that. So I still think New Bern and two other municipalities have to pay, but the rest of them will be in the general.
The only reason I mention is it could be a cost to the county, and...
It could.
All right, other questions?
By redistricting, when will we know by each district will be redistricting?
The end of August is when I will be able to process the data and look at the existing districts and the population of each existing district, their 2020 population. And so let's say that there are the seven districts, three of them are actually within the plus or, so I had said approximately 15,000. It's, there's a plus or minus 5%. You have plus or minus 5% wiggle room. So let's say that three of the districts end up being within that plus or minus 5%, and then four of the districts are outside of that, they have a larger deviation. We would know that by the end of August. But that doesn't necessarily mean those are the only ones that need to be redrawn, because let's say that the more populous districts are in the southeast and the less populous districts are in the northwest, you would have to move census blocks, basically move people from the middle of the county up toward the northwest, and it's, all the districts might have to be...
But my concern is more towards my district, District Five.
Okay.
I wonder how that going to affect me year to come?
If I may take that one up just a little bit, and I think in 1990, this Board of Commissioners went from five to seven, and the point of that was to allow for minority representation, as we saw that probably across a lot of North Carolina, I would think. And I think that's been a little bit of maybe a concern that's been addressed by some in the county, is what does the law say about minority representation? Those districts were formed, again, back in the early 90s for that purpose. Does that law still stand today?
I would defer to an attorney. This is why I'm glad that I have Caroline and Tara on the team, or maybe Attorney Grady can speak to that as well. There's a possibility that they might be able to appear either remotely, or may be able to speak to the Commission at an August meeting, but I would defer to them on that.
And Mr. Chairman and Mr. McCabe, I will reiterate, the decision of what to do or whether to do anything rests with this Board. So it is, at the end of the day, you know, the folks with the vote in this room get to make the final decision. I'll also note that the beneficial thing about the plan before you is you will automatically be provided a couple of alternatives, you know, so you're not going to get, you know, one plan, and this is what it needs to be. And you'll have a chance to thoroughly discuss the alternatives, and if, you know, changes need to be made, or if we need to mix and match, you know, this Board will have that ability. So I think there will be ample time to get to some of the questions that you're looking at, and it'll probably be more beneficial when you see the actual proposals before you. That's how I would look at it.
Okay.
I understand. Thank you.
All right, any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I would note, if I may, Blake is set to take a tour of the county today with Mr. Hodges and Mr. Strong, and I really appreciate that. These folks want to get to know Craving County with boots on the ground, and can probably count on one finger on one hand the number of times I've seen folks want to have that kind of, develop that kind of familiarity with our community. So I think that's a great start, and we'll reap those dividends going forward in this process.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a comment or two? Blake, thank you for the presentation. I thought that was very well done. As a reminder to the Board, I believe there were only two Commissioners that went through this in the early 2010s. That was Commissioner Mark and Commissioner McCabe, but a gentleman who's part of the consortium, Marshall Hurley, was actually the attorney who took us through that process last time. So Marshall's on the team, and I'm sure that's a great reference point, Blake, from his memory of how we did it last time. To put in perspective, when we went back to 2010 and we looked at that data, the Commissioner district size was 14,700. That was the magic number. And remember, and Ari and I talked about this last week, we had not had redistricting since the 1990s. So there was a 20-year span where they checked the balance. It was okay, it was within the margins in the 2000, and then we had 20 years worth. But during that last 10 years, Commissioner Booker's one that reminds me, his district was at almost 22,000 people, and we knew the number had to be at 14,700 last time we did it. So there was some real big swings, Commissioner Mark, I'm looking at you, because you remember, we had to have a lot of meetings, because we really had to take those underpopulated and work them down.
Sure did.
So it's a fun process, it can be tedious at times, but it's good that we've got someone that was on the team last time we did it, and Blake, you seem like you got a good handle on it. So I think the data says it all.
All right, and it has to be completed as of today. It's got to be completed by when?
November 17.
November 17. All right, Commissioners, you've heard the information, the request, and that we're asked to do today is to consider if you want to retain the demographer and the law firm to assist the county in the redistricting process. What's the desire of the Board?
Make a motion. We approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion on the motion? Here none. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the robe on this.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Thank you.
That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
Morning, Commissioners. Mr. Chairman, thanks for the opportunity.
Mr. Chairman, thanks for the opportunity. I would say with Blake and Attorney Grady still here, obviously, there's a timeline now that's been established, November 17. There'll be meetings that'll have to take place in August, September, and October. So I'd just remind you, for your calendars, some flexibility would be great. We'll have to work with Blake, because he'll be representing a lot of different clients here across the state of North Carolina. We would want to probably target a public hearing, I guess, at either your first October or your first November Commissioner meeting. So it means when you have a public hearing, you need to have some map that's the preferred model that comes forward, that the public can have time before and time at that meeting to comment on. Last time we did do the public hearing, I think it was well received. I think it gives the public, just as Blake described, the opportunity to give their thoughts about it. And also, in this realm, with a distinct deadline, you may want to have some time, if there are feedback you have, to adjust. So I'll say that. Been a busy couple weeks here. As I mentioned in my last comments, we are in a new budget year. Mr. Warren reminded me that redistricting was something we talked about during budget, but he'll need to bring the budget amendment to include the cost at your next meeting for the services you just approved. So we'll have that for you next meeting. I wanted to give some updates on various things. In economic development, I was really excited. Business North Carolina Magazine, a magazine that I often read, but very rarely in the past have I seen Craven County, and we were actually in here three times last month. The first was, and I'll pass this around, was an article referencing the White River Marine Project that the board participated in with Hatteras Yachts. Second thing here was, if I can find it, I tried to mark everything, was a update on ASI, which is the defense contractor that signed up the week after Hatteras. And lastly, the most exciting thing is they did a top 10 for the state of North Carolina projects in the last year, and Craven County was number 10 for the White River Project. So I'm going to pass this around, let you take a look at it. I think that this is the type of thing that Mr. Wood's building inside his department, the excitement that we've been searching for, and the movement to create jobs and investment in Craven County we desire. I also, last week, with Mr. Bumgarner, attended a Highway 70 meeting. It was the first one we've had since COVID began in person. It was a very thoughtful agenda. We heard from the Secretary of Transportation, Mr. Boyett. He gave an update on where DOT is. As many of you are aware, the beginning of COVID, they saw some financial troubles that delayed projects and pushed things sort of back, particularly some of the things here in Craven County. From hearing the staff there with DOT, they feel confident they're moving forward. It is a new world, though. Gas tax has been what we've relied upon for many years to fund most of the DOT projects. We're going to have to look at alternatives moving forward as either fuel efficiency or alternative vehicles become more the norm. I did hear a report, and I stepped out just for a minute, but I came back and heard the very end of some of the more recent projects, some of the trouble DOT is having, is that when they had their cost estimate, it was one thing, and now when they're actually bidding it and procuring materials, it is a much different thing. So that's something we're going to keep our eye on, particularly with the James City project. If you've been through James City in the last couple months, you'll note that a lot of structures have already been taken down, a lot of things have been moved out of the right of way. So that thing is moving quickly. Last, since the budget, we've been working very closely with our Health Department folks on the pharmacy. We have engaged the architect, Mr. Oakley, who was here with us earlier, to begin that process. We have settled on a location and should be having bid documents and things very quickly. The board will probably see this in the month of August as an agenda item. The board gave a head nod to Mr. Harrelson. We had to put the cost estimate together, now the hiring plan that Ms. Parker's working on, and other things that will finish that facility. And as I try every year at this time, I want to remind you that each time you get an agenda, you also get a memorandum from my office. There are some great reports in here. I just want to highlight a couple this year, or excuse me, this month, that I thought were meaningful. If you look at our Convention Center report, there was recently a news article about how that facility's doing. I thought it was written very well. But Tarsa is really working to sell this facility. We're focusing on getting back to our conference, our multi-day events. Those are challenging. There's usually about a two-year lead time on planning for those. As a sheriff, early in March, hosted the Sheriff's Association. We know the benefit that it brings to our county, and that's what our focus is. But what remains strong are local events, weddings, military balls, local business meetings, galas, things like that. In the report, Ms. McCoy talks a lot about who's been in, who's looking, and who's signed a contract. And Gene's still here, good. The other report I would highlight is our solid waste report. We did get back out last month and start our roadside litter program. Picked up 93 bags of trash on the side of the road. It's a small effort there, this board acknowledged some years ago, but it makes a difference because what we're doing is we're getting on the secondary roads out in the communities trying to make it better. Working closely with the sheriff to make some adjustments to that program and get it back out, hopefully pick up the pace and double that number the next month. And lastly, Commissioner Mark, you had asked, and I had Gene and Stephen take a look at it, you'd ask about where Craven County was in the total recycling program, and I believe this data is about a year behind, but it did just come out, and we are now 21st. So back to your question, we used to be eight or nine.
Yeah.
Then it was 14, and now it's 21. Obviously, that's taking a holistic approach of what we get at the centers and what we do curbside, but just wanted to make sure that, and that's in that report as well. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for the County Manager? All right, here, none of Commissioners' reports. Commissioner Liner?
Sir, I have nothing.
All right, Commissioner Smith?
Nothing.
Okay. Commissioner Mark?
Nothing. Thank you.
Commissioner McCabe?
Nothing at present moment, Chairman.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Nothing, Mr. Chair.
All right. Vice Chair Booker?
Yes, I just have one thing. The citizen just this morning presented me with a petition that's been signed by several hundred people. And this petition is opposing any instruction or promotion of critical race theory, action civics, and the 1619 project. And I guess most of us a year ago had not heard of those items, but they've been quite prominent in the last few months. So what I would like to do, Mr. Chairman, is put on our agenda for our next meeting, August 2nd, a resolution. And this resolution is opposing these items. I'd like to put that on the agenda for the consideration and a vote of the Commissioners. Okay?
All right. The request is to have this put on the agenda for the next meeting.
Okay.
I have a motion. Do you want to have a second?
Second.
All right, I got a motion, a second, any discussion? Let me just ask for clarification, Vice Chair. Are you asking also that if this is put on the agenda for the next meeting, that it be voted on at the next meeting?
That's correct.
All right, so at that next meeting, we would have citizen comments, where folks could make comments. I like written comments also. You know, I said that last time at our meeting, another issue for some that can't come. Is that allowed, Mr. County Attorney, Mr. County Manager?
Yes, sir.
Okay, the board in agreement that we would allow not only for public comment here in this room, but also for written comment. Okay? All right, that would be included in the motion, too, in the second. All right, any further discussion on the motion? Here, none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, just put on the agenda. Anything further?
No, sir.
All right. I have nothing today. Anything else to bring before the Board of Commissioners? Here, none?
Mr. Chairman, I see Chad and Stephen have walked in. I don't know if they have something--
They got another meeting afterwards.
Oh.
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Yes.
I remind the board that yesterday was a very special day in Craven County.
Yes.
It was Commissioner Aaron McCabe's birthday. He turned--
I didn't say nothing, but I hope someone remind me. I thought Jason was saying something.
I'm older than you, you know, and I forget these things. I'm sorry.
Yeah. I had a wonderful birthday yesterday. It was real good for me.
All right, my friend, happy birthday, too.
Who is he? Is he on one of the boards?
All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
No.
Now, a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Stand up.